Welcome to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 16th, 2023. At this time, we'll do the invocation and the pledge with Commissioner Perkins doing the invocation, Commissioner Mollie doing the pledge, if you'll all stand.
Let's pray. Dear gracious Father, we once again thank you for allowing us to be in this place, dear God, this time. We thank you for your hand and mercy being upon us. Keep though, God, that we slummed and slept all last night. In the earliest morning, God, you woke up with a finger of love. We thank you for allowing us to go through this day. And, God, we thank you for allowing us to be in this meeting tonight, oh God, that you will bless us, oh God, to be able to have a successful meeting, dear God. Bless those here, present, God, no desire to be a king couldn't be here. And, God, we pray for our nation, dear God, that you shall bless, guide their path and guide their ways, oh God. Give them understanding, oh God, that they shall lead this country. Look on those that, God, that are not out on foreign soil, dear God, that you blessed them in the name of Jesus. And, God, look on our departments, God. Bless each and every one, oh God, we ask and pray. And so thankful, God, to have you bless us, dear God, this board, dear God, to achieve, to finance, dear God, to do the projects we were set forth to do. We pray to continue to bless us, oh God, and we give you praise and thanks in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We'll start with item number one, approval of the minutes for the May 2nd, 2023 regular board meeting. Is there any discussion or do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We're going to pull item number three to move to a workshop and well, I'll get to the other one in a minute. So we'll start with item two, item four through item 11. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve? Some move. Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number three, Mr. Scott, if you want to address that.
We've got several comments and probably need to just talk about it a little bit more. So we decided to just move it to a workshop with some other things and I'll talk about the other workshop items a little bit later.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any constitutional officer items? Any staff items? Jason, you got anything?
Yeah, just real quick. Have we missed an opportunity?
You're getting bad as north, Jimmy Junior.
Mr. Bo? Mr. Bo? Okay.
Don't mess up the clock.
No, just real quick, was going to touch on Little River Springs. We've been down there for two weeks now, $5 a carload, great positive response. Haven't seen the downturn in attendance at all, so just thank you for your support. Thank the sheriff for the officers that are down there. I'm sorry. And so we're continuing on. So anyway, we're.
No issues, I mean, with the public?
Very minor, few social media trolls that are, you know, putting negative things out there, but the people that are coming in the park are very happy, no issues.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, last meeting, we talked about this, about the veteran affairs and the veterans going down. I got a call from them. Everyone was just very courteous, not only just the staff, but the folks over there attending, just they're enjoying the springs, were coming over and shaking hands and thanking them for their service and they just appreciated that, so.
That's great. Yeah, we've had a river cleanup crew that came down and did a cleanup along the springs and even down the river itself. We've sold, or not sold, sorry, we've handed out over 50 veteran passes, you know, to citizens in the county, so, yeah.
And I see where there's a yearly pass, if you want to say something about that.
We sold a couple of those, just had one today in the office.
And how much is that?
It's $120 for the year.
So for the public out there, you can get a yearly pass?
Haven't seen any, talked to the guys about Royal Springs, haven't seen any kind of negative, you know, activity there where it maybe had moved from Little River to Royal, so no issues there yet either.
Good, great, thank you, I appreciate it. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. That 120-year equivalents to $10 a month, two trips a month and you cover your.
It's reasonable. We kind of went off what the state parks are doing to try to be in line with them and not really competing, so yeah, I think it's very reasonable.
I do too. And then secondly, have you noticed since this went into effect, have you noticed a decrease in maybe not so much the vandalism, but the litter, trash?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, our guys are able to go down, you know, three or four times during the day and make rounds, pick up trash, empty the cans.
But as far as the litter, yeah, a little more responsible.
Yeah, I think the people themselves are picking up after themselves as well, yeah, definitely.
Good.
Good news.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
Jason, about the other people reaching out outside of Swanee County, we getting any people from other areas that's coming out? Or maybe bought the passes like for?
Not that I've noticed buying the passes. We see license plates that are, you know, coming in from Georgia, but as far as out of the area, haven't got any phone calls or anything out of the ordinary.
I'm just kind of curious to know, we was at rural days and all the people that was talking about the springs today, that's one of our selling points, to come into, we have our little town, the Royal Springs and things like that, yes.
Well, we can, we can come up with something to kind of, you know, right now, we're just charging by the vehicle, so we need to start counting maybe how many people are in those vehicles and just to get an idea of attendance and maybe where they're from, do a little survey. It'd be good to know for our tourism department. Maybe he can give us some money if we can justify.
I believe you talked with them outside of here, he'll work with you, he's a good guy, I can vouch for him.
I can twist his arm, yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Jason, appreciate the help, Dave. Ms. North, you got anything? You're on the clock.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Apparently, I'm going to need to increase my budget so I can help Jason get some funding that the commissioner on the end down there supports, so.
But I was supporting you.
Yeah, and I support Jason, so we support each other.
Okay, that works in hand.
No, we've also heard good things in what they're doing down there and it does kind of make a difference, and we're trying to handle that through our channels to just, you know, to let people know there is a fee now to go down there, but it does make a difference when the social media world, which Chris has kind of handled, so, but yeah, we definitely support what's going on, appreciate you guys for doing that. I was down at FEDC State Conference last week, lots of good stuff there, and we talked to some folks, we're going to be dragging to the Rural Summit this year, which you guys, I would highly suggest you attend again, I think you had a good time last year, so we're looking forward to that. And I want to thank the esteemed gentleman on the end, he reached out and let me give him some tours around of some of the projects we're working on and Catalyst Site and a lot of good stuff that's going on. We've got a lot more to cover, but it means a lot to know that he's putting time in to figure out what we're working on, he wants to put eyes on exactly, so I was very appreciative of that, because it means a lot. As you know, I get excited about these projects, so thank you for that as well, so.
Thank you for playing tour guide, I appreciate it.
Anything from Ms. North, Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jim. Eddie, you got anything? Anybody else? Any commissioner items at this time?
No, sir.
County attorney items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to go over a few things, if it'll please the commission. The first, I just want to thank everybody on the commission as well as staff for helping me get acquainted with everything this past two weeks.
Adam, will you pull that mic a little closer, please?
Sure. Everybody helping me get up to speed on everything the last two weeks, but rather than spend time thanking everybody, you know who you are, I appreciate it, I'm going to really kind of focus on three things, which is where we are in the transition from Mr. Prabat to me, talk about where we are with a few random items, and then the third thing is a request to speak with the state attorney's office. So first, where we are in the transition, I met with Mr. Prabat for a significant amount of time last week. I don't quite have all the paperwork that I'm going to need from him in terms of getting everything over. The good news is, is that most of the projects that he was working on have come to a conclusion, so it's actually a pretty clean break for Mr. Prabat to me, so the process of transitioning, I don't believe is going to be that difficult at all. The only other thing that comes up in the context of transition, as this board's aware, when I applied for the job, I was counseled to a case where Swanee County was the opposing party in that kind of, in a friendly way. Since I was hired on Tuesday, on Wednesday last week, I withdrew from that case, so I'm no longer part of it, so I have nothing to do with it, as well as we've retained the county attorney over in Columbia County, Mr. Joel Foreman, who's offered us a government rate, and he'll continue to represent the county, although technically, I'm supposed to be in charge of all county legal matters and over all of the, our third-party attorneys, I've arranged it so that he will report directly to Mr. Scott, so I'm completely out of the loop on that case, so there's no conflict of anything, so just, that's how that's going, so the transition's going well. As to a couple of small items that are in transition, which are kind of carrying over from Mr. Prabat to me, probably the two most significant items are, number one, the redistricting process, just so everybody's aware, I'm on top of it, I've spoken with Mr. Spitzer, who's the person in charge of our redistricting process, I've gone over with him, I've also gone over with him, the applicable 1984 final judgments, which the county is subject to, so we'll make sure we do it in accordance with the law, so everything's up to speed on that. The other issue in terms of transition, and I see the folks from NFPS are here, as we saw during the presentation last council meeting, there were certain issues with getting certain rights to various roadways in place in terms of just moving that process along. After a review of that process with Mr. Prabat and as well as with Mr. Chairman and as well as Mr. Scott, I'm going to be doing a complete overhaul of the process for that, which will make it much more streamlined and it's going to make it so that we know where we stand with every property owner and when, and it should just be able to put everything in a chute of moving cases. At the very least, we can move along, see where we're at, rather than having things kind of sit in the ether for a little while, which is where it was at when we were here last time. The last thing I want to talk to you all about is something that came to my attention that had started with Mr. Prabat, just by way of a little bit of exposition, so a registered sex offender had written to the county asking for an exemption from enforcement of our residency requirement, that sex offenders stay outside of 2,500 feet within the bus stop and other type of areas. So in doing research on the matter, I wrote him a letter that said his application is denied because under the applicable case law, it should have been denied. But more importantly, and this is what I thought I needed to bring to the attention of the board, in researching it, I had to sit down with Junior Smith, the deputy who's in charge of sex offender registration over at the jail, and one of the things that Deputy Smith mentioned to me, and I've since followed up with other law enforcement officers who I'm still friends with from my prosecution days, is there has never been an agreement between Swanee County and the state attorney's office for enforcement of county ordinances. So although we have multiple ordinances which have criminal punishments attached to them, there's never been a mechanism to actually prosecute them. That seems like an oversight. So I checked with the state attorney's office, confirmed that the agreement has never existed and it doesn't. And also, just as a practical impact, I just want to point out to you all, that in speaking with Deputy Smith, for example, it limited his law enforcement capabilities because he knew he can't move forward on certain things because there's no mechanism to enforce our criminal punishments when they do exist. It also ties the hand of our code enforcement officer. Now, I'm not saying that anybody needs to be going out and getting arrested, but I'd rather have, put our people in a position to have that tool available to them, should they need it, rather than them just simply not have it. So under the applicable statutes and rules, since we're a county of under 75,000 people, with all due respect to Mr. DuRette, he has no choice but to enter into an agreement with us if we ask for it, in terms of the state attorney's office agreeing to prosecute municipal ordinances, the statutory rate is $50 an hour, which is much cheaper than I can do it. So I just wanted to take the board's temperature with me getting with Mr. DuRette's office, getting an agreement in place to hopefully bring to the board at the next meeting to put an interlocal agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the state attorney's office to prosecute violations of criminal county ordinances, if all that made sense. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Do you need, I'm assuming everybody on there is in agreement with that, but.
I don't think I need a motion.
You just need a consensus from the board?
Yeah, I just wanted to take the board's temperature and I'll follow up with Mr. DuRette and the formal agreement would obviously have to be ratified by you all.
Absolutely, it doesn't do any good to have an ordinance if you can't enforce it, so.
All right, thank you, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Adam, appreciate it. Moving on to item number 12, discuss with possible board action preliminary plat and road construction plan approval for Old Sugar Mill Farms Phase 6 subdivision. Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, kind of two requests with this agenda item. First, we'll deal with the preliminary plat approval for Old Sugar Mill Farms Phase 6. You have the preliminary plat and application prepared for Phase 6 of Old Sugar Mill Farms. This is a 40.3, or 40.82 acre parcel of land. The proposal is to construct 26 1-acre tracks that would be part of this next phase of subdivision. The subdivision would require the construction of new paved roads. It's been a while since we've had a subdivision come before the county to be approved that required new construction. For the most part, if it existed a subdivision on an existing paved road, those lots fronted that existing paved road and did not have any new construction. So 98th Street, there is a portion of 98th Street which, where the asphalt ends and it picks up its dirt for a period of time, so that area that is of 98th Street that is dirt will have to be improved, and then the newly constructed internal paved roads into the subdivision would also be improved to 60-foot rideaway, 20-foot wearing surface, asphalt, you know, our construction standard approved roads. So the first item for action would be for the Board of County Commissioners to grant preliminary plat approval of the subdivision so that the development can move forward. Before the subdivision can come back, before the county commission at a final plat approval, road construction would need to be complete at that time to get final plat approval. So normally, in the process of a preliminary plat approval, or before they can start their construction, the Board of County Commissioners would grant road construction plan approval. So we had the engineer Chad Williams had submitted to us the road construction plans for Old Sugar Mill Farms Phase 6. We took those construction plans and forwarded them to the county's engineer, which is North Florida Professional Services. They reviewed those road construction plans for compliance. As far as the roadway design, that was approved. There were a couple discrepancies in the original set of plans that needed to be corrected. Mr. Williams has corrected those plans and submitted a revision set to my office, and we received those yesterday. One thing that I still do not have a copy of, and I do not believe it's actually been issued on the project yet, would be their actual permit from the Swanee River Water Management District. I know it was in the process at the time of the last conversation, so as far as the action that I would be looking for the Board of Commissioners tonight at this meeting would be to grant preliminary plat approval of the subdivision, also approving the road construction plan approval, that they're in compliance with the county standards so that they can start their construction, and all of that would be contingent upon us receiving the copy of the permit from the Water Management District for the stormwater retention on the development.
How many lots did you say were?
26.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Mr. Meeks, has North Florida Professional Services reviewed the revised plans to see that they, those corrections were in fact corrected?
They have not, those were, they were, they were issues regarding the cover sheet that had nothing to do with construction design of the plan.
Okay, technicality's not actually designed.
And the roads would have to be put in before final plat approval?
That's correct. Construction would be complete.
On 98th Street as well as interior?
98th Street and then the newly constructed roads, which our 911 address office will name those, so they'll be given those road names before the final plat approval. What we would do is take the construction plans, approval, Public Works Department will have a copy of those, I'm guessing Mr. Willie Willis will be in charge of monitoring the construction of these roads as they, as they start, and so along and along, we will, the county will be supplied copies of all density and proctor testing for the subgrade, you know, compaction on the lime rock and everything and the thickness of the asphalt, to make sure that at completion of construction, all the roads meet the minimum standards that the county would require for the construction.
After it's completed, who maintains that paved road, that interior paved?
Not county. County's policy set up, and I believe they made that decision, the previous board in 2008, to no longer accept any new roads for maintenance, so those roads would be owned and maintained.
By HOA?
By the homeowners association.
Yeah.
The developers typically responsible for those roads for the first year, and then typically, they would turn them over to the homeowners association.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hale.
And Mr. Meeks, would that include, and I'm sure it would, stop signs, speed limit signs, everything that we would require?
And those street signs, you know, because they would be private, would be blue signs?
That's right.
To denote that they are not county maintained roads, they are private roads, so those would be blue. So at the time of the completion of the construction, when this application comes back before the board for final plat approval, those roads will have been completed and satisfy, satisfy all the county's requirements. Stop signs would need to be in place and blue road signs also be in place.
Got you.
So they, you know, will have everything complete, ready, turnkey at the completion of those roads before they get final plat approval from the board.
I'm assuming that's on civic systems and well water?
It is. And there's additional lands to develop with additional phases, this will be on the north side of 98th Street, there's available lands on the south side, which will be an additional phase, and they can phase back towards State Road 51, so there's several phases that would be in the works, you know, coming up.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale.
And they do have an act of HOA out there, so I've gone and spoke to their meetings and citizens several times, so they're pretty good at what they do out there.
Sounds pretty good.
Yeah.
Any other, anybody else, any further discussion?
No, good.
You just need a motion on this, Ron?
Yes, sir, it'd be preliminary plat approval and approval of the construction plans.
Any further discussion or do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Meeks.
Thank you.
Are there, item number 14, any additional agenda items?
No, sir.
Seeing none. Public concerns and comments, anybody wishing to say their piece? Seeing none. Item number 16, administrators' comments and information.
Just want to review, I sent an email out a while back about workshop items, I know we're talking about workshops, we identified, Chairman and I spoke today, and I'd like to check the other commissioners' schedule, but June 20th, that's a Tuesday, be before the commission meeting, but have it start at 1:00. That meets everybody else's schedules.
We're going to need to start about 1:00, there's a lot on the board.
This is the same one you emailed out earlier today, right?
Right.
I'm good. What time?
1:00. 1:00 P.M.
1:00 o'clock.
Told you the list.
What y'all got to talk about?
Mr. Bo says we need to have a workshop.
We got a meeting after that at 5:30?
Now, as we go through the list, I've got so far, anything you don't want to talk about, we can, we can save some time if you choose to. Sometimes when you start talking at workshops, you start talking a lot, or listening a lot, maybe, so.
And that's just my suggestion, I mean, there's four more of you guys, so I just knew there was a lot, but I'd figure we do it on the same day, the board meeting.
I like doing it before the meetings, just.
What day is, I'm sorry, what day is?
20th. June 20th.
No, I can't get my calendar to come up.
Good with it? Good? Everybody else good?
Yeah.
Mr. Attorney, you good?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'm going to run through the list of topics to discuss, and anything that you do not want to discuss, we can certainly pull that or add to that. First, I have solid waste, the assessment, also landfill transfer stations, kind of the whole scope of landfill, solid waste, curbside pickup, came up last meeting too, so all that can be discussed under the same topic. Fire rescue assessment, services, the whole gamut we want to talk about there, fest of wishes. Utilities is another one that we need to discuss some. Space needs, the, we touched on this briefly a couple of times, but the tax collector and project praiser needs different space, we need to start developing a plan for that. EOC, Mercy Operations Center, location of that, and anything else we want to talk about there. The purchasing policies, and any comments you've got on any of these ahead of time that staff can prepare would be helpful also. We're preparing the personnel rules, I've been working on those for several months now, don't know if you want to talk about those, or just want, I thought I was giving it a shot to put on the next agenda and see if you liked them or not, then we could always discuss them on the workshop if you don't, so.
That's personnel rules?
The, a couple of topics came up from department heads, traffic flow, looking at bigger picture of traffic flow, we've had some meetings outside of the commission on looking at bigger picture of some traffic things already, we may want to just touch on that, talk about it just, you know, from 30,000 feet view and just give them some conversation. Also, Ms. Ferrari twisted my arm and said sportsplex could expansion, we can handle that at a workshop or any other format you want to. Couple other things that may be far-reaching for our workshop that we need to discuss at some point, there's been some conversation just recently, I forgot which commissioner I was talking to that got some information about the night skies and looking at the development that we are having so that we're protecting ourselves from ourselves, so that when we look, walk outside in the evening, we can still see the stars as we have more development. The general idea is to, if you point lights down, so you don't have as much spillage on light, not keeping people from putting lights up for development projects, but to limit how much is going up. The other part of that same conversation could be the far-friendly landscaping, if we get into any landscaping things in the future, making sure that we're looking at doing things properly with less irrigation and that sort of thing. I don't want to, really, the intent is not to over-regulate, it's just have conversation to how to help ourselves, protect ourselves from ourselves.
Can we do that in the order you just laid it out and just do it as time permits?
Sure, it works.
Everybody good with that?
Was there anything else anybody wanted to add that we need to talk about?
What about roads, upcoming chip seal roads, as far as the budget's concerned, before we get there?
Yeah, we're working now on a kind of a plan on looking at all the roads throughout the county, all the paved roads, if you've got some specific, we may need to circle back around to that, I'm not sure we'll be ready for that one or not, but the idea is to kind of do an assessment on where we are, all of our county roads, let staff look at prioritizing those, and then present that, and then let y'all discuss it too. We can always do that at a shorter commission meeting if we need to also, without having to do a workshop.
I agree.
But with the chip seal pricing continuing to go up because of limited access to granite, and we may have a fix for that, we're working on too, but we may, you look at more, you know, staff done asphalt at some of these smaller runs too, so, but anyway, that's all I've got unless you've got other things to add.
Anybody else have anything you want to add to that? I mean, that's a mouthful.
I guess what I'd be, if they have time to probably cover all that.
Ah, you see why we start at 1:00.
Yeah.
All right.
I get, Mr., go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I don't have anything to add.
I was just going to say, if one of us have an idea or another topic, can we just call Mr. Scott and have him add to that?
Yeah, just shoot him.
And put it on the back end, if we have time to get to it, we do, if we don't, we don't.
And if something that comes up that's pressing, we certainly can move it up the list too. the list too, um, a couple of other things, Mr. Mr. Chairman, um, been involved in the safety meeting with, uh, DOT, we're getting really good conversations with DOT in the past several months, um, plan another meeting with some of the, um, some of the people, um, was headed, scheduled for tomorrow, it's got rescheduled to have more people on the, on the conversation, so we're excited about that, um, one thing I would, also like to just add is, uh, let's keep, like, for you to keep the Hand family in your thoughts and prayers, Eddie lost his dad, and that we're, you know, just hearts out for him and his family, uh, Carolyn Saft's mom is not doing well, she has some surgery, and, and just keep her in her, your thoughts and prayers also, also Dennis Rafferty's, uh, wife had open-heart surgery, and, uh, she's recovering and getting better, but, um, he's been out for a while taking care of her, so, um, we never know what, uh, people are going through, the struggles they're facing, so, uh, just keep everybody in their thoughts and prayers, if you would, please, that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Man, this is gonna be a short one, ain't it? That, uh, board member inquiries, requests and comments, Mr. Perkins.
No, just great, having a great meeting, uh, I think we said, uh, the...
Speaking of the microphone, please, Mr. Perkins, I'm sorry.
Okay, you can hear me?
I don't wanna get scolded again.
Get scolded, okay, I'm sorry, uh, no, just grateful, thankful for being here, having a great meeting tonight, I thank, uh, for that, and I would say we're praying for Chief Hand and his family, you know, lift them up, uh, and to all the ladies, happy belated, uh, Mother's Day, and, uh, just thankful.
Hi, good, I'm on, uh, Eddie, sorry about your dad, know what you're going through, and, uh, appreciate all the staff coming, they do a good job, and thanks for all the ladies, everybody coming, all the mothers, Mother's Day, and my birthday.
Did he thank himself?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he did.
I finally made it to the hill, man.
I hear you, buddy.
To the hill, huh? That's it, thank you, Mr. Mobley, Commissioner Land.
I guess happy birthday, Commissioner Mobley, belated birthday, um, again, prayers to the Chief's family and the Hand family there, it's never easy to lose a family member, uh, no matter how old y'all are, um, that's really it, happy belated birth, uh, Mother's Day, like Commissioner Perkins says, all the mothers out there, we, we're in between meetings, so didn't get to thank them, but, um, a lot of good moms out there.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Land, Commissioner Hale.
Mr. Bo? I'm messing with you, I, I just wanna say, Eddie, we, we are sorry, my friend, and it's, I can't even imagine, so our hearts go out to you, uh, you, you guys talking about Mother's Day, and, and, you know, there's a lot of us that are fortunate enough to have our mothers, I do, some of us do not, and it's, uh, it puts things in perspective, and you see things, and what Eddie's going through, and you guys know I say it, try to say it at the end of every meeting, nothing's, uh, nothing's given to us, so, uh, don't take nothing for granted, folks, don't do it, but, uh, thank you to the staff, uh, I have to call out there, probably more than they want me to, and Mandy, I don't know if she's still here, I know I wear her out from time to time, but, and Greg, I, I know I catch him when he's, he's home, but usually when I'm driving or riding, I like to call him, and, and he don't never tell me shut up, he just keeps listening to me, so I appreciate that, so, but, uh, that's all I got, and thank everybody for coming, it's good to see everybody here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see everybody here, and belated happy Mother's Day, and Eddie, thinking about your dad, and I texted Eddie the other day, and he said, well, he's probably already fishing, and knowing wherever he's, he's probably got a line in the water somewhere, I'm sure, so, uh, our hearts go out to you, you and your family, and, uh, for that, uh, that's about all I got, so, uh, I just need a motion to recess.
So, move.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.
Aye.